Kevin can join us when he gets here. Welcome to the city council work session for Monday, September 12th. The first item on the work session is going to be development and planning update. Hunter?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to this.
Try to get through this as quick as possible. We got an hour, I got an hour and a half, right?
Yeah. Take as much time as you need, right?
This is, um, this is kind of a, just a little prelude. This is more of a, I would, I did not want to call this a moratorium update, but, but it is leaning in that line. What have we done since we've implemented moratorium at the end of last year? And it's kind of the way we look at, at information in a way we don't think we ever have. But I want to kind of preface this by saying this is changing as we speak. So it's kind of like the, the Golden Gate Bridge. When they paint the Golden Gate Bridge, they get to the end, have to start over. All this information we're seeing is changing daily. So by the time we get through with it, it's changing. There's a new house occupied, there's, there's something else. But in essence, what we're looking at with this first section is, is comparing with what we've approved mainly through either city council or planning commission and what's actually occupied. We're going to use occupied, but what's been built and then what's lingering. That's, that's kind of been a, it's an easy question, but it's hard to define, especially with the way we've historically kind of kept up with paper files and, and not having that digital inventory. So keeping it as simple as we can, breaking down into small, or number of categories, even though if you look at our use table, we've got a, a lot of districts, I'm kind of breaking this down pretty simple into single family, low, high and medium residential, or it's the multifamily and then RV, mobile homes, lodging and commercial. Commercial just is all encompassing for medical and institutional, industrial, all-in-one cat, retail, all-in-one category. And starting, I'm going to kind of explain this first slide a little bit more in detail and it'll apply to multiples following. This is looking at, since 2006 was kind of a number that we made it back to frankly, but to get digitized, mapped and, and inventoried on what's actually been built. But breaking this down into low density, that's 5,000 square foot lots or greater. Since 2006, there's been 1,088 approved. You can see on the map where those are generally located. On the left, 614 were inside city limits, 474 were outside. Now, the graphs on the left will kind of explain this. The green line is what we've approved and what has been built is shown on the blue line. So I think you'll see through some of these, you'll start seeing a trend. One, you know, where are we ramp, when did we start ramping up? What's the trends in housing especially? And then on the bottom, we're showing cumulative each year adding to the total. And, and one thing that worries me is the separation of that, those blue graphs and the, or the blue line and the green graphs there. That's the inventory of unbuilt and you want to keep those kind of close together. So the more you have unbuilt and approved, and we saw this trend, we knew it was happening, but, but being able to show up with data, you know, where something was approved five years ago and we, we all of a sudden see it with, with no forewarning, it can, when it all comes at once, it can be overbearing for, for our staff, for utilities, for everyone. And then just showing kind of percentages in an easy way for the low density, single family, 56% of those approved were outside the city, 44% inside the city, and 46% of those approved were built, remaining 54% yet to be occupied. Moving on to medium density, I won't go over every detail and numbers, they're on the screen here, but 1,438 total homes approved for medium density. You can see the map where those are at. Kind of got a funky line graph over here, but, but you can see it, it started, this, this was kind of the, the median between the housing. So you can see it, it almost trended pretty consistently on the approvals. We had some spikes from one year, but, one year to the next, but overall, as we started getting 14, it was, it was pretty consistent when averaged. You can see that with the cumulative on the bottom, but again, you're seeing that separation from the blue line to the, the top of the, the green charts or green bars.
Hunter, in the, in the occupied column for y'all, is that a CO has been issued? Is that the determining factor?
That is, yes. That's basically, it's, like I said, everything's changing daily. So when we kind of go at, whether that was field research, looking at online maps, if we, or Google actually has been out on some streets in March. So there's some updated information. Using all those tools at our disposal, we used occupied as somebody's actually there. So they've had a CO is another way to, to say that. You know, they could have been another dozen released in the last week since we've looked at some of these, but that, that's one moment in time. And also what we did on the built occupied, that number does not reflect what's occupied today. It reflects from the pool when they were approved. So if something was approved in 2014, only half of it was built, then, then that line's going to reflect that. Looking at medium density, you can see, and this is pretty common sense because in our planning jurisdiction, unless it was a village subdivision, 15,000 square feet's the minimum lot size. So they had to annex in the city to get anything smaller than that. So 87% of medium density was inside the city, 13% out, and about 50/50 approved and built. Moving on to high density, the 1,600, you can see on the bar graph on the upper right, you know, you see a real big trend. You see a spike in 2021. More houses per lot, the, and you also see those, that kind of same separation here. So 1,600 is distributed on the map on the left, 81% inside the city, 19 outside. You're seeing a little bit more separation here on, 35% has been built, 65 is not yet to be.
Hunter, let me stop you right there. Two slides in a row, you've said the 81 inside, but the colors, unless I'm colorblind, huh?
No, the colors are, the colors are flipped on that one. Yep.
I think they're flipped on both of them, on the medium and the high.
Medium and high are flipped. So the bigger number is.
So what you said was correct, don't look at the.
That's correct. We'll get the graphics before we, we put this back out on the, but yes, they, 87% here is in, inside the city. And same there, 81% is inside the city, 19% outside. All right, multifamily, you can see where those are on the map. Almost 1,900 units approved, and you see amazing spike there. That in 2021, and you'll see this number, I believe there was, I won't quote me here, I believe 985 was approved in 2021. And you can also see that separation really is, is pretty large between what's approved and what's built. There is some naturally occurring there. I mean, if it was approved a year and a half ago, it's less likely to be occupied right now, but, but it's a little concerning when it's combined with the peak and trends that started before then. So multifamily is correct colors on this one. Your green does show 85% inside the city, 15% outside. 67% is yet to be occupied. So out of those 1,900, we've still got a good number of those coming. Looking at those combined, what those trends were, the, the line graph, you can see where the spikes are, and you can see the distribution of percentages on those. Again, this goes back to 2006, but low density residential is the lowest category there. I think we, we kind of know that's the natural, national trend. We seem to be matching that without any protections in place to ensure we're getting those if that's what we want to see. But multifamily is the, the largest piece of that pie. The comp plan team, which are, there will be having some meetings coming up, they did a land use map for us and it's what's, it's only within the city because that's the only place we had zoning when they did those. And we looked at single family housing versus multifamily. And this 93% of the historical pattern in Fairhope for housing was the single family homes and 7% was multifamily. The recent pattern since 2006, you can see how that changed and then kind of separated out 2021 where multifamily actually outgained single family, all single family combined. And it made up 52% of our, our housing as approved through the planning commission. There's the map, you'll see this in the, the upcoming comp plan and those studies in much greater detail, just kind of wanted to reference it here. And there's the acreage, the way they broke it down is much more detailed and separated out by acreage. So it gets into a lot more details on what that current land use is. So using this, we kind of looked at projections. There's always a multiplier, persons per, per household is a, is a tough one, debatable. I, I use the census, there's information there, lot of information on why they chose that, how they come to that conclusion. But 2.6, whether it's a single family residential, large home versus a one-unit apartment, they use, that is a household and use a multiplier of 2.6. With the projects approved through either planning commission or city council, that's projected population growth since 2006 of 15,591. With occupied, that, that estimate, that's an estimated 6,200, 9350 yet to come by the ones that have not been built yet. Commercial is a lot more difficult to, to project in the same ways. Some, some commercial projects are approved as part of mixed use. Some are just empty lots with no future plans. Some actually have building footprints proposed or square foot limitations. So it's hard to do, use the same analysis. So what we did here is really where did, where are those approved? The circles you see on the screen are the nodes in our current comp plan, not as it's proposed, and where those locations were in red for commercial. We do have, in the square footage, there's 1.25 million approximately square feet of commercial approved and 74,000, 740,000 square foot is occupied. We got a couple of big projects that'll be coming, both publics have a lot of square footages, they'll be coming online hopefully within the next six months. This does not include uses in commercial outside the city limits in our planning jurisdiction. Those uses are, we don't have, didn't have zoning since 2006 for all those properties. So any lot created out there did not have a zoning or any use restriction on those properties. Some of those have been now zoned and have designations, both residential and commercial. Just wasn't a whole lot of information included here, but RV, mobile homes approved in that same time period, there was 155. And lodging, there was only 26 units of lodging approved during that timeframe. I think I would project that you'll see this number grow. There's, seems to be a, a lot of interest on providing for a hotel or even short-term rentals in those appropriate locations, but, and again, I want to mention this, I'm going to say what's not, I'm going to bring up what was not included here, but want to mention again, this was just through planning commission cases that either came through the planning commission or city council. So getting to that question, what is not included in this, in this study? These are single tenant owner, commercial buildings such as Aldi, the University of South Alabama campus, gas stations, storage units and exempt projects. As you know, schools aren't required to, to get approvals, so school expansions. And kind of what we're looking at here is, is overall the burden on infrastructure traffic, whatever that may be, parks. It also doesn't include renovations, additional bedroom, somebody adds a bedroom, that's not included in these numbers. That's not minor, additional square footage on, on commercial buildings. That's not included in this study. We had 99 acres added to the TR district. There's no current plan for that. That's, that's not included in similar projects such as that. We, we had vacant lots created prior to 2006. Those new homes were not included or, or commercial where that might be. Family subdivisions have really proliferated and those are not included. Those are exempt from Baldwin County's subdivision regulations. And then other projects that were what we could just call straight to the building permit. Just also in, with the new zoning and with our change in planning jurisdictions, don't want to exclude some of those projects that may also, they might not burden the planning department or even building department, but certainly some of our utilities are out there in these areas. So this does not include subdivisions that are approved by Baldwin County. A couple of weeks ago, you had the 125 lot shown on the screen. There was also zoning implemented in the planning jurisdiction right outside the city limits. It doesn't include the new commercial along Brino Road or the high-density residential that was zoned next to both publics that does allow up to 15 units per acre, those apartments, multifamily. And in addition to that, we're looking at what, what's went through, as y'all know what 115211 reviews are, there's been over 100 miles of, of new fiber communication lines approved through the planning commission. Those are mapped on the screen. And that does not include those incorporated in new subdivisions. So this is just coming to the planning commission for a plan for fiber and/or overhead, replacing overhead lines. Now with the moratorium, as y'all know, this was implemented basically for new large subdivisions outside the corporate limits. Did not include building permits or projects inside the city limits. So kind of what have we done since this was implemented? There's, I kind of laugh, there's so many large projects here that in any, in previous worlds, any one of these projects would have been tough to get done in a year. So I got to give a lot of credit to, to my department and, and others around the city, but the utilities are, have unified and there will be, large projects will be going to utilities for review before it even comes to planning for applications to evaluate. We have implemented, and thanks again for the citizen surf software that allows planning to be digital for the first time ever. We will be accepting those applications by the time the moratorium ends, or the end of the year. But even today, it's helping us coordinate reviews amongst different departments and seeing plans and having a, a central location to, to do that. So building kind of led the charge on that when they were first out of the gate and it really helped us all come on board with that. We are developing new applications and intake processes. This is not, this is kind of to, to hopefully streamline, I mean, we don't want to be punitive in all of the changes we're making. We want our processes to be easier and our goals to be clear. So I think that will help with new applications and the intake process, which we'll also roll out by the end of the year. We, we hope to be complete with our scanning project, that, that is an incredible time saver. We, we've been able to gain a lot of ground just by getting the minutes from the clerk's office and Eric's plans digitized. But getting all of ours and complete will be something that will greatly expedite reviews. And then as you've been aware of, we've, we're continuing work on our comprehensive plan. Those, we'll plug, October 3rd and 4th will be public meetings that our comp team will be in town and presenting the work they've done to this, this point. Building Department and Public Works spent a lot of time updating the right-of-way ordinances. That has, that was kind of a first step for some of the, the roadworks and hopefully we can add into the subdivision regulations. We are fully staffed, so thanks again for your support on that. We've created applications for mapping sidewalks and bike path. That was a big part of the comprehensive plan and our bike head committee is using those applications in the field to update those. We, we're also dealing with the, the challenges implemented with SB 107. That's, that's daily between building department, us, county, trying to, to wade through that. Not only in what we deal with day-to-day, but how we're going to move forward through that has, has been a, a lot of work. We're going to, we're using fees on, with adjacent jurisdictions. Hopefully we'll have you updated, proposed updated fee schedule by the end of the year to adopt. And then got to give Richard and Electric Department, they're really, Public Works and Electric are really doing most of the work, but we are renovating the offices on Con building for the planning department as well. What we're do, going to be pushing for at the, to the end of the year, we've been in a lot of discussions on what amendments were, this kind of timeline, but I want to jump to here. We've got two goals for amendments to both subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances. Those that are, have a higher sense of urgency are reasons we put the moratorium in place. How do we address that? Some of those had nothing to do with the, the moratorium, but by the effects of SB 107, we might have lost some review that we can incorporate in the subdivision regulations. So by the end of the year, that's a big, our highest sense of urgency. And then coming out of the comprehensive plan, what we, what can we bring into the ordinances there? And we have hired the teams who help us make a, the comp plan team will be making some of those amendments for us. I'm going to breeze through these. This is just kind of a list of our highest priorities. I do want to, anything highlighted there, that's in the shortlist due to, you know, that we want to get done by the end of the year in subdivision regulations. So mitigation credits on, on wetlands, we lost that when we lost the wetland ordinance. Looking at, at traffic and traffic studies and how those are done and updating our regulations, I think they're a little out of date. Procedures and how we do things, I kind of went through some of these, but, but clarifying most of these processes is a major goal. I think our, both our applications and standard operating procedures, creating those will go a long way toward resolving some of these. But that's, that's kind of the end of my, my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions or get you a copy of this if you'd like to absorb some of this.
I would think everybody would like a copy of that for sure. And council, do y'all have any immediate questions for Hunter? Just based on this quick overview? I guess I've got a few, just, you know, substantial amount of units to be built. Some of those I think were approved before there was a, a sunset clause. Do you have any kind of idea what's maybe prior to that and what subject, what's actually subject to a sunset clause?
No, not.
Okay, I know that's asking a lot. You did a lot to just get that.
This gets us to where we can start now moving forward with those questions. You know, the way this was done, for example, the Fly Creek PUD, there's been so many amendments to that, bringing it into one place so we make sure we're not doubling, double counting things or, or making sure each amendment's accounted for. It, it's hard, but it gives us opportunity now to go back and look at it in a different light and answer those questions.
How are y'all doing on the timeframe? Does that seem doable?
Every day is a deadline. So it's, you know, we, we have, I don't think we failed one yet, so we'll, we'll just keep pushing at it. All right. Anyone else? Questions?
Just one question for you, Hunter, and there was a lot. I think my questions were all geared towards the beginning of the presentation. When you look at the mix that we have right now between low, medium, high density and multifamily, but what did you think about our, our current mix? Any, did you gain anything or did you glean anything from that data?
Yeah, I, I kind of joke sometimes about this. I think, I think some information got out that we might need 600 apartments, but that got out to 50 people, 50 developers, and they all came in one. I don't think that the current trends are sustainable personally. I think we had a very good, there's a reason people were coming to Fairhope. I think Fairhope did one thing well, whether planned or by accident, over the 125 years, they had housing for everyone. And it was at good ratios. I think maintaining that ratio is key. You know, we hear all the time, there's not enough housing for young, there's not a, every one of these categories, there's not enough housing. I mean, there, there's a, there's a, there's been a shortage, especially the last two years of every housing type. So I think it's unfair to say we only have a shortage for, you know, affordable housing or, or, and, and I'm not a fan of that word anyway, but I think we're, I don't like the trend personally, especially what we saw in 2021 where everything was tiny lots and single family homes or multifamily homes. You know, there was also, I, I hope now a little bit of different dynamic. You know, we always had the unzoned that we were dealing with. Every project we looked at outside our city limits, maybe on the edge of our city limits that was coming to the city to annex, always had that caveat, well, if you don't approve it, we'll just build it up in the county. It's unzoned, we can do what we want. So I, I hope with the zoning districts that have been approved, that helps. But as you can see, that's, county's also going to be making decisions on some of those and giving 15 unit per acre zoning, that's their prerogative, it goes through their planning commission and county commission. So, you know, I think working with them is going and strengthening those relationships is going to go a long way to, to get the unified vision.
So speaking of that, that, bringing it up, my last question is, where was that subdivision? You showed just one example of that it didn't come before city of Fairhope processes and was approved by the county. And if anybody lives there, I'm sure you got a great house, but that was the definition of a cookie cutter neighborhood in my, in my personal opinion. That was, that was pretty dense.
That one was south on 24, yes, down, um, south of our jurisdiction now, with our jurisdiction kind of came back to, was reduced to the police jurisdiction. So that would have been two years ago in our jurisdiction, it's no longer.
That's, that's what, I have grave concerns over with this SB 107.
Yeah, the, the impact without any kind of, without oversight or control.
A hundred percent, right, Council President.
Yeah, I mean, what can we do to address that? Are you having to take that wait and see approach because we don't know where that has landed fully?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, it seems like there's a new deadline every, you know, January 1st, there's a deadline that might pull our jurisdiction back even further. Then in July of 2023, it might come all the way back to the, the city limits if we don't have an agreement with the county. I think we're hopefully moving toward that. Mayor's spending a lot of time with conversations throughout the last year and a half. I'll be meeting with their planning staff next week or this week, and hopefully we can get something in place at minimum before January 1st so we can keep what we've got until July and not have multiple changes. That's the short-term goal.
Yes, sir, Council President. Please, go ahead.
What we're hoping is that we can kind of come to an agreement with the county is what we're praying for.
Correct.
And I think once we have that agreement, I'm going to speak positive, I think these little donut holes like this that affect us tremendously as far as our infrastructure and other things that citizens are concerned about will be filled. So that's the prayer. You know, we got to work hard on having that agreement. But going back, I, I like how we've kind of changed some things as far as these houses being built, as far as going through utilities first. I think that's crucial, the day and age we live in. The only question, and I'm hoping that who wants to come will go through utilities as well.
I would love nothing more than turn our application away.
Yeah.
So I'll be happy to turn it away and say, go talk to our utility. Because that, as you know, you're serving, serving your time on the planning commission right now. When we get an application, state law says we have certain timelines and we're deadline-driven. That is unfair to utilities, in my opinion. This, this is the first time been this intimate with the utility department. I just haven't had that with a, with a city before. But, you know, they, them trying to review things while they're fixing repairs and all in the field is a major challenge. And, you know, it, I'm sympathetic with them. So looking, looking at this and how can they have more time to review projects? Not only more time to review projects, but actually understanding what the project is. So many times we just had somebody, is water available here? Sorry, not to throw water in the bus, but that applies to all of them. And if they. And if they answer, yes, well, there's a major difference between telling someone you're gonna build a single-family home and 300, you know, apartment complex, both in the time it's gonna take them to get there, the cost, the, the burden on our systems. So I'm, I'm really thankful for, for those gentlemen coming together and facilitating that.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Hunter?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate the update, appreciate your work on that.
Thank you, Hunter.
Next item up on the work session is discussion of water and wastewater rates. Mayor Jason is...
I will, I will start, and then Jason and Kim will both jump in. So we have talked for some time now about looking at the water rates and irrigation, the charges for irrigation for people who have irrigation meters, to set an ascending rate. So if you use a higher amount of water, then you get charged a little bit more. So we did look at this and set that threshold at 7,000 gallons. Our water rates are fairly low, based on, you know, around the county, looking at the municipalities and other, other water providers. So we're putting this before you tonight to, to get your input and to ask you if this is something you'd like to move forward on.
Just made him give up.
I didn't, anything to do with coming up with rates, but we talked about this in the executive session one time, and we've talked about it in others, where the biggest impact on our water system is irrigation. Right now, we're averaging somewhere around 6 million a day, okay? We can produce almost nine in certain areas of the system. It depends on where it's at. Rock Creek is our largest customer, that whole area up there, and we have, that's also the largest area to irrigate. So that's our biggest burden on the system, is irrigation, in our opinion, and I think it's shared with the mayor and Kim and staff, is that, you know, the, the higher water users pay the higher bracket. They're what's putting a burden on the system and what's causing a lot of our upgrades necessary to get the water to these areas, like Rock Creek. We're having to increase line sizes, and we do, and we've done a lot of work up there. And I know before I came, it was a list, I mean, a pump station, a booster station was put up there, and a water tank was talked about, but the water tank was never installed, but the booster station was because of the low pressure issues up there. But that project, since the tank was not finished, the booster station is not used, but, so the history tells, we've had issues up there for quite a while. So anyway, going back, that's the reason for the initial conversation with increased price for irrigation. Our people, it doesn't have sewer, I think, by what Kim and them looked at, average use for Fairhope, which surprised me, was 7,000 gallons. I would have thought it had been closer to five, but it was seven, so that's where they came up with the breaking point. But Kim can go into the detail of that.
We looked at the customers that are in Montrose that are on City of Daphne water. So those customers, the meter department has to manually go, go, and they go to each one of those meters, get every month to calculate what their water usage is, and then that's turned into billable data. So what we did is we went and looked at, we threw rates out there, $55. Well, if we did $55 flat rate compared to what we're currently billing, we were gonna lose $9,000. We turned around and put $65 flat rate for these cus, these same customers, we were gonna lose $3,000.
Is that per month or per year? What is that?
That's for a year, that's for a year.
Per year.
That's for a year. So we're trying to look at, you know, what is our, what's our average in that area. So we, so taking that, we just put $70, $70 flat rate on this ordinance. But that is just trying to look at, our, our meter department wouldn't have to go out there and manually read Daphne's, their meters, going out there reading their meters, because it doesn't, you know, communicate with our technology. And so to be able to, since they don't have our, they're not on our water system, just to be able to put a flat rate. So that's how we came up with the numbers, is trying to come as close to the average of what's currently being used.
Okay, so the wastewater for those folks is on Daphne, but the water's on us?
No, the water's on Daphne. Daphne has that.
And the wastewater's on Daphne?
No.
Wastewater's on us.
Wastewater's on us. So we have sewer running, running in front of their house, and they're hooked up to our sewer, but how the other, anybody else that has our water is based on water is sewer rates. And that's the reason you have those irrigation, because if they have an irrigation meter, it doesn't calculate into their sewer bill.
Gotcha.
So I think those are the only areas that we have outliers of that's not on our water. So it's just, there's about 100 meters.
Okay, and so we'd say, I mean, in theory, you'd save the man-hours or the expense of sending somebody out there every single month to read meters?
And, and it's not an uncommon practice, if you have somebody who only provides sewer just to do a flat rate.
It's just trying to come up with the right, the right, you know, right rate. I was just trying to look at, our system allows us to be able to put some what-ifs out there. And the customers that were inside our city, in that same area, that was in our, inside our city, we were looking at the, inside the city, but they didn't have our water, those customers, we were able to, and those customers at $55 is a break-even, it'd be the same, but it was just those customers outside our city limits was a heavier user, I guess, of their wa, their City of Daphne water.
Okay. All right, Counsel, any questions for Kim on this?
Was this the only rate change suggestion, suggested?
The, that, that rate, and then also, if you use over 7,000 gallons, there's a higher rate for your water.
Is that?
And that's it.
A dollar.
It's a dollar more.
Okay, I was gonna say, what is that?
Over 7,000 gallons.
So, so you have the, the one rate?
One dollar per?
Per thousand.
Per thousand gallons, yeah, per thousand gallons.
So it'd be tiered. So once, once you get up to 6, 6,000 gallons and flip over to 7,000 gallons, once you flip over, the rates increase a dollar more.
So I have a question, Counsel.
Yes, sir.
Are we, are we getting an outside consultant to come and look at our rates to see where we are, or are we trying to do this on the inside?
Well, currently, we have a, we have a study that was done using financials, that was 2018, and, you know, it's, they've been, the council had actually, on the sewer, put in escalations from that study, escalation. So we have a rate that was, went in place, I believe, 20, 21, and 22 is an additional rate. So based on those studies that was done, and it was recommendation, I believe the recommendation was to tier it to those customers for the sewer.
So we didn't, we didn't want to change it all overnight, that first year?
And it was on water and sewer?
Yes.
Yeah, water and sewer.
So, so right now, the only change we're making right now, more to come, is on that particular two items that we just...
Yeah, right, there's more to come, only because that ordinance was already established, tiering those rate increases.
Okay.
Every October, I think 2021 and maybe 22.
Okay, and does that get us back whole, with what I'm looking at? I mean, I thought I saw a good formula here, using the labor cost adjustments and all that.
Right.
Are we not using that formula, or are we?
We are, we will be using that formula, yes, yes.
We will be using that formula, okay.
Yes.
And, okay.
And we have discussed about looking at how often the, the council has had the rate studies done, because you have a cost of service done and then a rate study done, so that's the last one that was done.
They're recommended every three to five years, so will be due for one probably next year or the following year.
Okay, that's an interesting question.
Probably next year. Jackson Thornton is who has done those before, um, yeah.
All right, okay.
They're doing for all the utilities.
My, my next statement, and Jason, I, I, I'm gonna say this publicly, I still think we need to go to gray water, if it's legal in Alabama. I, I, if we can get where we're using our wastewater to use irrigation and our water to water our people, not the grass. That's my opinion, and I'm gonna stick to that, and I'm gonna put it out there, that I think we need to look at that for the future. I don't think it's gonna get any better.
And Jason and I, I mean, we've talked about it, we also have met with somebody who gave us a place that we could go visit to see how they're using that operation. So there is some opportunity for us to look at that, and we, it, we, we just gotta slow down long enough to be able to do it.
Well, just an observation, Counsel, as Jason was talking about the, the higher users, I, I was thinking at that time, well, you know, you're, you're paying for what you're using, though, and, and those higher users, you know, we do make some profit on this utility, and so the higher users are making us more profit. However, as I thought about it more, I, I came up with the analogy of an electrical system. And then for electricity, you have a, a usage, you, you pay for what you use, but you're, part of the equation is also capacity, because, you know, and that's based on, you know, your peak usage throughout the year, and it's a real complex formula, the, the, the peak half hour, you know, and all that stuff that goes in that formula. So really, I went back to what Jason thought and said, when you have these high users, you're having to pay for capacity, because just like electricity, that plant may not be able to, may not, you may not use, use all that electricity one day, but when you get that super hot day and you hit your air conditioner, your lights, you still want it to come on, and that's the capacity charges. And so the same thing is true for water as well. You may use 7 million gallons a day, but that day we hit 10 million gallons a day, you want your water to run it as well. And the, so you, basically, it's, it's a capacity charge, if you look at it like that.
It is, and it's just a reminder to folks, I think, to conserve, you know. I told, I tell everybody now, if we want, we want the rain to start, we'll just put in the conservation ordinance, enact the conservation ordinance again, because we've had rain every...
Well, it's the same thing with electricity too, you want people to conserve.
Right.
In, in the peak, in the heat of the day, you want them to try to turn lights off and conserve electricity, so we don't heat, hit those peaks.
That's right.
Because when you hit those peaks, it establishes the rates for the next, sometimes several years.
That's right, it's more expensive. So again, it's just, you know, an awareness for people to conserve, and again, we did look at consumption rates across our system, we feel like 7,000 gallons is fair, and so that's why we established that number.
Yeah, and, and I think we've had conversations with, with the utility superintendents and two council members at the time, the mayor and Kim, discussing, you know, we also want to make sure, long-term, that we're charging enough to cover the ongoing infrastructure upgrades that need to be made, so that we're not having to be put in a situation to either rob Peter to pay Paul, or borrow money, or whatever, that the, the ongoing maintenance of the system needs to be built into the cost of, of the water, so.
Well, yeah, and I do also want to remind people, I mean, we're not trying to put this on the backs of our customers either, that when those developers come in, we are, you know, charging them system development charges and making sure they're contributing to our system and doing things that they need to do to help us upgrade.
Yeah, we, we, but the maintenance is real.
They'll pay for that when they buy a house.
Right.
Yeah. But thank you. Any, any more questions before, I'm sorry, any more questions? All right, thank you, Kim and Jason. Kim, before you run off, I guess I just looked down and saw you were up next again. And our next item is a discussion of the master equipment lease purchase, and Counsel, and I know we always try to cover all the agenda items, but in the event we couldn't get to everything, I just want to make sure we did have this on the radar. This is gonna be item number 18 when we get to the actual council meeting tonight, so item 18 on your agenda. Miss ma'am?
So I, I put a packet for you to see. Back in last year's budget, or is, you know, this year for 22's budget, you'll have a, a legal sheet. That was equipment that was approved for a lease purchase option that was done, and it was part, it was part of sanitation's budget. Two of the pieces of equipment has came in, so that's the reason that I have put it out now. But I also added some pieces of equipment that is on the draft 23's budget. So I put this out to bid for, for the banks, and we got a, an excellent rate from United Bank of 1.79. We've done this, since I've been here, several pieces of equipment, and when we, the last piece that we had financed was in February of 20, and that rate was at 2.78. So I did think the rates that came in, the lowest rate at United Bank was at 1.79%. So I'm just here to answer any questions. Council President thought it would be a good opportunity just to be able to discuss it before we got into the meeting, if y'all had more in-depth questions. But I do want to clarify, this is not a lease like we had with the golf equipment that you would purchase at fair market value at the end of the lease. This is our equipment, it's just financing, we hope, we will hold the title, the garbage truck will have City of Fairhope, but a lien holder of United Bank on it.
It's basically a three-year financing.
It is, it is.
So there's nothing added to it? There's no payment at the end of, of hundreds of thousands of dollars?
No, this is, is just a financing mechanism at 1.79% interest. For the sanitation department, when you're looking at your collection of fees and you're having to buy two garbage trucks, a front, or whatever, a dozer, you're just stretching those cash flows over three years versus trying to hit all that piece of equipment all in one year.
And no, and I don't know, no penalty, but also no, I guess, embedded increase in, in price of anything? The only additional expense is that 1.79 interest.
Yes, and, um, bond counsel will be doing all the documents, and so United Bank is putting, paying for the bond counsel.
6,500 dollars.
Up to 6,500.
Also, there's no penalty as far as, not saying we will, but if we wanted to pay it off early, there's no penalty for that.
There's, there's no penalty. I put that in the documents when I put it out for bid, that we would want to be able to, no penalty to pay off.
I think it's a great deal.
And the timing on this would be close, I mean, prior to budget, and if, if you don't, you know, for whatever reason, stuff gets pulled from the budget, you just read, what do you do with the money then?
Just payback.
Payback, got it. Okay. Counsel, any questions for, for Kim on that? Pretty straightforward.
So the, the resolution is authorizing to sign any and all documents for the president, for Cindy Clark, mayor, or me, any of those documents, so that's what's in the resolution to authorize that.
Okay, during the closing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That was definitely a good rate.
All right, yeah, it was. That's competition.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is committee updates. Councilman Brough?
Nope, being how we had that fifth week in August, I don't have any committee updates to give tonight.
Councilman Martin?
I have nothing.
Councilman Robinson? Councilman Bingham?
Well, I do. We have a personnel board meeting, I sit Thursday, this Thursday, on the 15th, at 7:00 AM in the boardroom. For all of us who'd be, like to be enlightened in the personnel department, come and see us, bring a cup of coffee with you.
I got something I can talk about.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I did meet with the public school commission, and it seems like our three-mill tax money is doing well for our schools. Hopefully, we'll be, get off the city's back a little bit soon and very soon here, got enough reserves coming, that we'll have some money freed up for that, because they're doing so well. Lot of teachers that are being added, which I really love. We're now creating a metric to show where that money is going and how it's being used, which I really love, with the specialty teachers, what they call, where they pull the kids and help resource teachers, help them with math and, and things like that. The English as a second language kids, we need to get more teachers, and that money can help get more teachers for those kids in our community as well, as they have surpassed the African-American population right now, as far as percentage. And so that's a, that's a big deal, so we need to help those kids. But that's a good thing, all things positive in that area.
And since you brought that up, on the three mills that we, we have coming out of our property tax for the school, public school commission, Kim or the mayor, what do we have left on that agreement for the K1 center? How many more years?
Should be more, more, plus payment.
So 2023 budget, the budget we're about to approve, it's gonna be the last payment of that?
I think, I think that's not, it's 2023.
Two more, this year and then next year, got it?
It was 19 was our first payment, or was that when we signed?
That's when we signed everything.
So the first payment was in '20?
I think we paid the first payment. I think we can look, we paid, we paid a payment back here.
19, 20, 21, 22, 23. That's five payments?
I think next year is our last one.
Which would be this budget?
But I think next year, yeah, this coming budget year will be our last.
I thought we had one year left, of course.
That's, that's good, that's, okay.
One more street sweep, but we can buy without financing it.
There you go. All right. Thank you, council. This time, department head updates, and if you want to address any items you have on the agenda while, while you're at it. Kim, since we've already been covering everything you have, what else do you have on the agenda tonight, anything? Okay. All right, Jessica?
So I have number 12. You'll remember that we authorized, or that you authorized a submission to HMGP for our safe room. Initially, that was a much lower number. We have gone back to the drawing board, we've got to increase the budget there. But the good news is, FEMA is now going to cover 90 percent of our costs, as opposed to 25 percent of our costs. So our budget has increased to $2.7 million. That reflects the current prices and current inflation on all building across the nation. That is a $862,000 and some change increase, but because our 90 percent match, our responsibility decreases significantly to $270,000 and some change. Take away from that, that we also have 100, and, I'm sorry, we also have $156,600 worth of property value for the place that that will sit. So that will, you know, help reduce our hard costs, all the way down to $113,809.67. That's a significant decrease from what we originally planned to pay for this. So even though we see that number rise on what the overall budget is, I mean, it's pretty great to be able to decrease our costs that much. So that's what you see over on number 12.
So I know that, I forgot the gentleman's name that is kind of helping us-
Mr. Culpepper.
Mr. Culpepper. He's done quite a few of these, so he's got the-
Correct.
The expense dialed in pretty good, and doesn't anticipate it wavering much from-
He doesn't. He did have some major concerns. I mean, we developed that budget about a year ago, and he had some major concerns about the number that we were at because of the rising cost over the past year. So looking at what his costs have been for other safe rooms that are in development, this is in line with that square, cost per square foot.
And if it did go up from this number, who's responsible? Is it still at that shared percentage, or is the city responsible for the difference?
I feel like it's going to be, I think it'll be shared at that point.
Okay, so that's my question.
Right. And we are still waiting on a final notice of award for that. We're hopeful that that is coming soon. We also have two other HMGP grants, they're in the pipeline, or applications that are in the pipeline for the city. One is for grants, or generators for lift stations. The other is for the downtown warning signals system. We were notified that both of those would be funded by 90 percent if we are awarded those, those grants. So that does significantly decrease our costs. That makes Kim very happy.
Do you have any other projects or things going on outside of the agenda that you want to update us on, or?
There's a lot happening right now. I would love to be able to come back to another work session and show you the spreadsheet that we put together of everything that we have that is in our hands, but also that we have in development, because it, it seems like, going day-to-day, it doesn't seem like it's very much, but when you look at it all across the board, we're doing great things. The leadership here helps that, it makes it easier for me to do my job. So hopefully, we'll be able to see more coming down the pipeline.
It might be good to have that on the next work session, just to carve out a little bit of time for you to-
Sure.
Show us the big picture, and if you, if you have a minute-
Yeah, absolutely. I would love to.
Shoot that out in advance of that, and everyone can kind of take a look and-
No problem.
See what all you've got in the pipeline.
And do you have any further questions on this?
Counsel?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Johnson?
Just one update outside the agenda discussion. Aldot has announced the call for ATRIP II applications. As you know, that is part of the Rebuild Alabama. That is for road improvement projects that are, can be city roads, but that have a direct correspondence or direct connection to a state route. As you know, last year, we pursued one for the intersection of Valanta and US 98, Reno Road. We were not selected. We were selected the year before for the Twin Beach and Reno. Mayor and I are in agreeance that that would be a good one to re-pursue. So we will be, you'll be seeing that in the next month's meeting. And the applications are due in November. So we got a little bit of time, but we are updating the cost estimates from last year, because that definitely probably has changed. But as you recall, there is no mandatory match with ATRIP II, but they highly recommend that, that they would like to see some skin in the game. And as you know, we have a developer on the corner that has already made a commitment to put some skin in the game. And I think our proposal would be very similar to what we did last time, which would be that we'd be responsible for the front-end preliminary engineering survey and design, and take care of the utility relocates that would be necessary, with the goal that the, the actual developer would be covering 100 percent of those hard costs. So we will be bringing that to you in either the next meeting, or the one following that. As far as the agenda goes, a couple items do want to cover, probably 14 is one that we should get a little bit in detail on. Just to kind of give you some background on the K-1 center, before this council completed the purchase, we did engage the Architecture Division of Thompson Engineering to do a pretty broad building assessment. And they, they reported to us on not only the mechanical, electrical plumbing, but the structural, the envelope, the roof, as well as environmental concerns. And they had engaged Southern Earth Science to do what we call a qualitative analysis of, for asbestos, which means that they sampled 20 known building materials from that generation of a building and tested for asbestos. And we did get, I think, eight hits in building materials that were present in that structure that, that did have asbestos. Mostly, it was the pipe insulation, which is very common, and it's unfortunately the worst type, it's about 65 percent asbestos, and it's highly friable. But also, if you recall, the floor tiles, as well as the mastic, did indicate the presence of asbestos. But understand that was qualitative, that is just that it is present, and in what, what materials is it present in. It was not quantitative, it didn't ever say this is how much there is, and all of its exact locations. Now, jump ahead, we have received an EDA grant, as well as there's a HUD grant behind it, that is helping us to redevelop that piece of property. We participated in the EDA grant kickoff a couple weeks ago, and one of the first words out of their mouth is that all asbestos has to be abated prior to issuing contracts for construction. We, we kind of wrongly assumed that the construction project would include the abatement of asbestos. We cannot do that. We have to take care of that before we issue a, a project for construction. So we did reach out and talk with Southern Earth Science, and they have the ability not only to go in and do a survey that, that quantifies everything that's there, but also what we call a work plan for abatement, that then we will have to put out on the streets for a company that does abatement to come in and remove that material and fully abate it. There is some good news, it's an unoccupied building with no designated use right now. When you, post-abatement, there's a testing requirement that every workspace has to be tested a series of times for a period of time, to ensure that the asbestos is not present in the air or anything else. If it was still a school, you would have to, every classroom, every office, every individual use of that building would be considered a workspace. As an unoccupied building, you pick one location, you do the series of tests there, and if it comes back clear, you're abated, and you can move on. So that is in our immediate future, but we are recommending to authorize the contract with Southern Earth to start that process, to not only quantify, but also put together a work plan that we can put out on the street for bid.
Any idea what kind of time delay, and delay might not be the right word for that, but what additional time this is to have to have this done in advance of the contracts issued, rather than as part of-
Here's the good news, and that's kind of why we're trying to be proactive here. And Jessica can scream from back, because she knows the dates better than I do. We are just out for advertisement for the design team for the K-1. So that, that is probably, probably 90 days away from you ever seeing a recommendation for who to select as, as design team. Because not only do those RFQs have to come back in, there's a process we have to do, there's going to be a selection committee, there's going to be in-person interviews, and all the process we go through. The good news is, is if you'll notice in Southern Earth, their turnaround time to get in there and get going is pretty quick. So as soon as we can engage that contract. So we don't think it's going to delay anything. The good news is, is that, that once, in 90 days, when we have a design team, their deliverables are probably six to nine months out. And by that time, that thing should be fully abated and clean and ready to go, to, when we do have final design documents to go out for bid for the construction contract. So, and we have to have it under construction in July of 2024, correct? So that's kind of our, our timeline. So that's when it has to be evaded by, so.
Counsel President, I got a question for Mr. Johnson. So when they, when you, when you hire a design team, you know, they're going to look at, you know, reconstruction or remodeling of the building for, for Hatch. I mean, where are we at with a performing arts center at that location? Because I would think you'd want that design to be included in that. Even if we have to pay for that separately, you'd think that it would save money. And then also, the construction, can that be coordinated to take place at the same time? And if so, we're like way behind the eight ball if that's what we need to do.
And, and Mayor may be better to answer this question. We've got to be very, very careful about mixing and matching, and you'll kind of see that in the next two agenda items I want to discuss, is that the, the EDA and the HUD grant is very specific in what it's for. And nothing says that we cannot make sure whoever the selected design team has a consideration for future other uses that are going to be on our dime, but we really can't mix and match, because the, the grant is very specific for economic development.
But if we don't talk about that now, we're going to miss that opportunity.
Well, and I think that's what the, the select team, I think, two city council members are on, the mayor's on, those are going to be things that are, that, that design team has, have, has to look at the Hatch development, also for all future uses as well, even though they, that won't be part of their contract deliverables, because it's very narrowly defined by the funding that we've gotten from Hatch, from EDA and from HUD. Did I say it well?
Yeah, that's correct. And we've been very clear in talking about it as a team, what our intent is with the Performing Arts Center. But once we get the design team selected, then that's when we need to have a conversation with them and make sure that they understand what our goals are for the property. We just can't mix and match that right now, because we're, everything that we're doing is related to the EDA grant.
Any other questions on the abatement of the asbestos? And then I, I can talk intelligibly, hopefully, on items 15 and 16. They are, they are kind of tied together at the hip, and I kind of hinted to it. Item 15 is specifically to the GOMESA grant, and it was specific about what the professional services could, could be required and used for. But just as we spoke about, we realized that this is just a, hopefully, a first phase of many phases of, of making the Triangle property a, a really jewel of the city, and a recreational environmental facility for, for our citizens and visitors alike. And it was very important, I think, to you as the council, and definitely to the mayor, to make sure that we have not only some master planning included in there, as well as some stakeholder engagement. And the GOMESA grant doesn't pay for that. They said that this, they're, they're, they're specifically paying for the design survey and, and design of the elements we applied for in the grant. So item number 16 is with the same firm, but it is, it is a separate contract for stakeholder engagement, for public engagement, and master planning, so that we can make sure that what is first phase works seamlessly with future phases, and what the goals and desires of the council in, are going forward. So, and nothing says that when we get down the road far enough on the K-1, that we can't look at something like this as well.
I was going to say, this is the exact same thing, Councilman Burrell. To do a master plan for the Triangle is the same exact thing probably we do for the campus at the K-1 center. We just can't co-mingle that right now.
Right. But it doesn't mean you can't have the conversations, or say, keep this in mind as you're designing.
No, absolutely, absolutely. But that's once we select somebody.
That's definitely what I'm saying.
Yes, yes. It's something we've talked about internally, and talked about with Lee Lawson, and, but once we select that design firm is when we'll have those conversations.
And I do see Christopher Grant and Rebecca Bryan here. We may call on them during the council meeting to answer some questions in detail. Appreciate y'all being here.
And then item 17, pretty routine. This is Pecan Building Remodeled West. When they did pull down the interior wall panels, we determined, discovered that we had some termite, as well as water damage on the west wall around the exterior door, as well as on the south wall on, toward the west end. And, and our, our in-house electrical team is doing the electrical wiring. Unfortunately, the panel box that was available was designed, it was only, would fit in a two-by-six wall, and the one that would fit in a normal two-by-four, we could have in 16 weeks possibly. So we did ask the contractor to give us a price. They gave us a very, very fair price, and we're just asking for that approval, that change order of $3,315 to, to correct that damage, and to accommodate the electrical panel that was available versus one that would be a 16-week wait. And then number 19, you've already seen once before. As you know, we were processed final lives and insurance claims. We, we just bid the work that was covered by insurance, to only find out that we really needed to rescrew the whole roof on both the pool and rec buildings, so we put that back out for bid, and we have that bid recommendation there. And then number 20, also is parking recreation. This is two new bathrooms, one for the new ball fields at Valanta, as well as to replace the poor-conditioned bathroom at Founders. And I hope this is a sign of things to come. We had six respondents in here, and you can see the spread, and I'm probably sure the contractor regrets his decision to give us the price he did, because he was, he was low by, by a good bid. But we, you see a good representation of bids, and that's probably the first time we've had six respondents for bid in a long time. So maybe that means the, the market's coming back toward our favor. Number 23, I can speak to. As the Pecan Building has become into regular use with the Semble Clinic, the conference room, and soon to be planning a zoning, we realized during the 42 days of rain this summer, that we were water baptizing everybody that used the building, as they entered and exited the main entrance, and we are asking for an awning to direct that water away from the walkway into the sides. And you see three quotes in there, and, and no doubt that the low quote is a pretty good value compared to the other two. And then number 25, just a little quick background. During the response to Hurricane Sally, we ended up having the availability of a tree service for some emergency tree work. It ran into some problems, because there wasn't a pre-placed contract, so we put a proposal out to get a pre-placed contract in. We had received two respondents. One did, was non-responsive, because they didn't provide the proper bid bonds and performance bonds. The other, which would be the sole qualifying respondent, even though in the, in the request for proposals, we hinted at that you needed to be in line with FEMA equipment rates. They're way out of whack there, and FEMA will only reimburse per their equipment rate table. And we're asking you to authorize to reject and renegotiate, and see if the one qualified respondent would be willing to come in line with FEMA rates. Their labor rates were not off, off the mark from the other respondent by much, and FEMA, as long as it can be justified, is reimbursable there. But they're pretty firm on the equipment rate. So, and they may say no, and we may come back, and, you know, it just remains rejected. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See, we're running a little bit tight on time, so I might just jump to the front of the agenda and go through the agenda items. Let's see, first, Right-Away Construction Administration, Eric, is that you? And that's final adoption, we've been over that one. Same with MediaCom. Let's see, number seven, okay, that's deed restrictions. So I know we got some comments on that probably. Do y'all want to cover that now? Do you want to wait till we get to the council meeting?
Makes no difference.
All right. And Mayor, will you be leading that? All right. Item number eight, Marcus, will you be handling that? All right. Legal counsel. Item number nine. This looks like something we do every, every three years. Eric can cover that. Eric can cover that. Item number ten, and this is for employee Christmas event, mayor. Okay, how about Fairhope Docs? I know we've got some adjustments to that possibly, but who would handle that? Would that be you, mayor? Let's see, I know we've got Jessica on twelve. Item number thirteen, Magnolia Rivers, consultant for natural gas engineering. Wes is going to speak about that, all right. That's getting kind of down to the end. Do you, do you want to go ahead and address a little bit of that now? Yeah, if y'all want to, just go ahead and cover it now. We've got a few minutes. And we, Richard took so many of those, let's go over again.
All right, I only got one. I will give you a quick update. This, we're probably the first people to be able to say this, but the gas department is 100% complete on Church Street. So we are, we are done. You can clap if you want. We clapped.
They were afraid to.
But I will, I'm just bringing, basically bringing before you the selection that our review team made on the consultant for our, we called it leak-prone piping project. We renamed it a little bit from a cast iron replacement project originally to leak-prone piping. Basically, that just ties it into what FEMA's calling it. We're going to use this engineering to hopefully get an application to them for some federal grant money that is, it's no match, it's 100%. So we're going to, we're going to run after it this year, but we're going to use this engineering to hopefully throw something against the wall with them, and hopefully it sticks. But that's, that's basically what it is. I, I mean, I'm here, I can answer any questions now. We, you know, I could just tee it up for you now, and we can talk about it in the meeting if that's what you prefer.
Counsel, any questions? Wes on this, and this is, of course, just becomes consultant we're going to use for the engineering.
Also, Councilman Boone was on the review committee, so he helped select. So he might be able to answer any questions too that you would have.
Any questions right now? Wes is here.
Good, thanks.
Jump all the way to item twenty-one, and chief, chief's here. It's just a purchase, 2022 Explorer package, and it's already on the bid list, and it says the cost will not exceed 31,308. And I feel like we've had a conversation about this. Was this one you could put someone in there for a little while and then shuffle cars Right, so it's, that's why you're getting such a good deal on it.
This was to replace the vehicle that was in an accident about three months ago.
Thank you.
And with proceeds from the insurance company along with what we had left in the capital purchase.
Okay. Any questions for the chief on that? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
Let's see, item number twenty-two. And this is going to be for the procurement of a 300 KVA three-phase pad mount transformer. This is a pass-through cost. I think we've got to order it, but ultimately, it's going to be paid for by the, by the developer. Is that correct, Conrad? Or Ben, there we are.
They, they already paid that, and then they received us.
Okay.
So we already took the money.
You've already got the money, okay.
That was transformed at a short lead time.
Okay, what is the lead time on that?
We give them an option, and that's what they get. They went with it, so they paid for it.
What is the lead time on it?
That one's 10 to 12.
10 to 12 weeks?
All the others were, uh, the details, so.
Shocking.
Like I said, they've already, we've already received the numbers.
Okay. Any questions for Ben? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four, did, did we skip over that, or did Richard? Oh, item twenty-four's being pulled, I'm sorry. So item twenty-four is being pulled. Item twenty-six.
Twenty-four's being pulled?
Yes, sir. Twenty-four's being pulled. From the agenda tonight, a request of mayor. And then item number twenty-six is adding Josh Turner to Parking Authority. And who is a representative on the Parking Authority? Is that any council? Or which may, may does need it? I'm sure everybody all right with that?
It was a new.
Do we?
I don't think anybody told. It was a new committee.
Okay. I just wanted, I was going to ask if the Parking Authority, I'm assuming they all in favor of that addition. I think Josh is wanting to get involved, and. Yeah. And that pretty well covers it. So if y'all are good with it, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll be back here to start the meeting at 6:00.